Everyone, we'll go ahead and get started with our regular business meeting. It's June 20th, 2023, 2:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Matarri and Duncan. Commissioner Brooks had medical appointments. So if you join me in a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. And Dorothy, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, changes to the agenda. We've got items 13 and 31 that have been polled.
Yes.
All right, so we can go ahead and get started with minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes, item one.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right, and consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items two through 11.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
And payables.
I move that we approve the payables list for June 12 through 16 in the amount of $968,179.71, plus jury panel payments of $3,537.94.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion carries and item 13 is polled. Item 14, financial budget authorization to expend FY '23 funds for workboat placarding and hull protection. Parks and Waterways Director Snyder, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and it's Snyder for the record. Yes, but for you is a request from the Department to expend funds from the boat launch user fee account necessary to install placarding. You might think about a police vehicle that gets wrapped, same thing with a boat identifying Cooten County, Parks and Waterways, as well as the protective vinyl material that's affixed to the hull before we put it into service. Those costs for the materials and professional installation shall not exceed $14,000. As a matter of fact, we anticipate it coming in a little bit less. And again, funding would come from the boat launch user fee account, no general fund dollars of these for the work.
Okay, questions, motion?
I move that we authorize to expend fiscal 23 funds for the workboat placarding and hull protection not to exceed $14,000.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion carries, thank you. Item 15, Idaho State Department of Agriculture with KCSO, it's an agreement they have, and I would go ahead and hear from, I'm sorry, it's Rachel?
Rochelle.
Rochelle, okay.
Yes. And just a request for the agreement with, for, sorry, invasive species boat checks for the season, starting hopefully this next week. We did, it's the same contract as previous years, but we did increase the enforcement amount for compensation.
Okay, and it looks like increase to $70.
Increase to $70, yes ma'am.
What was it before?
It was 65.
Okay, questions?
And because of the increase this year, we did change that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the Idaho State Department of Agriculture and Cooten County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Invasive Species Agreement.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item 16, this is board approval request for a dishwasher lease for the jail. And we've got Captain Heil.
Yes, ma'am, thank you Commissioners, Jeremy Howell for the record. I'm here to get approval for a budgeted five-year lease on a dishwasher, replacing dishwasher in the jail. It was budgeted for $4,800 a year, and when we got the final quote after the budget year, it is $6,600 a year. Because we're most of the way through this budget year, we have the funds and it'll be prorated this year, and then we'll have to find the money as the next budget year is approved, and then we'll budget for the $6,600 moving forward.
So it's better than buying another dishwasher?
Yes, because the lease company will maintain it for us as part of the lease program. And the current one that we have, we bought in 2017 or 2018, it's cost us over $12,000 in repairs, and that's why we're asking to purchase a new one and then put it on, or to lease a new one, so that the repairs are covered moving forward.
Just real quick, how quickly do they come out to, I mean, do you have any idea of the service levels if they're going to repair it?
I don't know that.
No, okay. Okay.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve the dishwasher lease with the Sheriff's Office for the jail.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion approved.
Item 17, board approval request, KCSO move to Cootenie North or the old Cootenie Electric Building, and Lieutenant Lincapus.
Yes, ma'am, Lieutenant Lincapus for the record. We're here to seek approval for the move based on, I think, two other presentations that we've made to the board. I included two documents to you that lines out the projected probable costs of the remodel that would be, needed to be done. So we're asking for today approval to move forward, to go out to the bid process so that we can lock in some of these numbers a little bit more concrete.
So I guess my only thought would be, give us maybe weekly updates so we know where we're at with funding and that, so thoughts?
No, we've already talked about this, so.
Okay, so are we going to attach a number to this, or what, not to exceed?
Well, my understanding is that we have to do the drawings in order to get a final dollar amount before we can even.
The probable cost between the two documents is in and around 1.5 million is the probable. That's the very high end, and so I guess the request would be, not to exceed 1.5 million would be the request.
Yeah, I mean, not really. I was comfortable with around a million, so I'm not sure, looking at fund balances and stuff, how you want to.
Well, I mean, when we looked at these documents, I think last week, the 1.5 million was in there.
Well, except it was sold as, we're going to be doing a lot of the work internally, and that, so we'll save money on some of this stuff. And I do know that IT has some money from a project that they're willing to put forward to this as well. I guess I don't want to write a blank check and then have a nacho machine be put in. That's just my standard.
Ma'am, I don't think there's any plan to put a nacho machine into the facility. That was never in there.
I know, but you know what I'm saying.
Some of the work could be done internally, but what we found out is some of the projects requiring engineering were policemen, were not engineers. And so as we've moved through this process over the last, I think, 90 days, we've learned some things. And so I, nothing was sold. We've learned along this process of how this is supposed to go, so.
Well, let me ask you, what is the next step? What's involved with getting a final number that people can live with?
The final number is putting it out to bid. It appears that we're going to have to put out the drawings to bid to find out, you know, what that's going to cost. Secondly, those drawings have to get put out to bid for contractors to look at the drawings to figure out what it's going to cost to do the work. So probably two weeks for the bid drawings, I'm assuming. Accepting the bid is another week, probably, another two weeks for the bids for contractors. At that point, you got to accept a bid and get a contractor on board, so we're probably looking, I think the drawings were estimated to be three months to take, so we're well behind the curve based on trying to get this, this project done and also make room for the clinic. So we really need to either get some stuff moving or.
The clinic's out of the picture right now for that, for your building. I guess my concern, much like your concern is with the justice addition, we get into this and now we find out it's going to be triple the cost. That's just kind of where I'm at, because jail pods, I think, are more important than moving KCSO admin. I'd like to be able to do both, but without having.
Well, how much are we looking at spending in order to get these drawings together, would you say?
I don't have that estimate. I know Corey Trapp's in the room. I have no idea what that would cost.
Would Corey like to speak a little bit?
He could speak way more intelligently than I could.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm going to dime out, brother, because I'm not an architect, so.
Corey Trapp, LTA Architects. So we had put, we had put in the budget estimate a 10% fee for architectural and engineering costs based upon all the projects that we estimated, so that's $123,000. The reality of it is, if, I would actually come in at a lower percentage than that. I just budgeted 10%, just to make sure we're covered for some unknowns.
So because the total project cost is between 1.3, 1.5 million, that's why we have to go out to bid for engineering services?
It's because the architectural fee would be over $50,000.
Okay.
That's your great point.
So that's unfortunate, because now this is really going to be a long time.
We do have a contract to do some preliminary work. One way around that is to do an amendment to our contract. If, we've done that on some other projects, if legal would say that's appropriate.
So that, yeah, I mean, we can't make that decision here, but, I mean, it's, it's fine, it is what it is. If we don't have enough money to do the jail pods, then I guess we could go out for bond for that or something. So I'm just trying to do everything and.
And ma'am, I would submit that the 1.5 million, I believe, is a very high estimate. Again, you know, those are very, those are probable, even the term on here is probable, you know, it's estimated costs. And in looking at some of these projects, once we get the drawings done, I don't think they're going to be near as in-depth as what we believe that they're going to be, if that makes any sense. So again, you know, I don't want to lowball it and then have to come back to you. That's one of the things that we've learned, that some folks would like to know the whole picture, instead of having to continually come back and ask for more.
I know, we just started this project at $400,000, which was a lot to chew, and now we're up to 1.5 million, so.
There are pieces and parts of this that we could do at a later date, too.
I guess that's, that's what I'm getting down to.
That's the other way to look at it.
If we can have weekly updates on what the cost is and just what to get in, I mean, we need the women's locker rooms, we need the fence, those and the evidence, right? Those are three priorities to get in. So I guess that's what I, I don't want to write, I don't want to give a blank check and say, okay, we're going to just do everything.
Of course.
Let's do what we have to do to get in and then space out the project.
We plan on being good stewards with tax dollars, no doubt. The one estimate here of the 1.3 from Corey's organization is the, are the projects that are required to move in. The other document is the things that we could probably wiggle on a little bit, but that document does include the fencing and some other projects that are required as well. So, you know, again, it's at your discretion.
What was this building going to be used for? I mean, the county bought it.
Yes, well, I bought it to secure the runway and to protect the airport. So we hadn't gotten that far yet. There was a lot of stuff that had to be worked out, and we had three years to do it. So here we are.
Yeah, I mean, the way I understood the last meeting is that we had these numbers and we were going to proceed, at the very least, with getting the final quotes, because these are just such, I mean, the spread on this stuff is hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, you can't make a good decision with that.
Right, and I'm totally fine with going on to the next step.
If I could put out one other thing, just for reference, in 2021, this document was produced for a plan, one of the solutions to the Sheriff's Office issues with room in the administration area was to add a 5,500 square foot addition, which is projected at 2.4 million in 2021, which I'm sure is probably closer to three or four million now. This move will allow a net gain of about 5,500 square feet to the administrative areas without having to spend $4 million. In addition, we're gaining almost 1,200 square feet for detective space and over 20,900 square feet for the rest of the facility.
It's a good project, we just have inmates sleeping in the boats, and so.
Making those statements more for the public to know, just so they understand that, you know, this is a pretty good bang for the buck overall.
Yeah. Let's make a motion.
I'm good with proceeding to getting the drawings so you can get the bids. So I move that we approve the request for the KCSO to get the drawings, to make the bids or get the bids for build out for this project.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 18, board approval request, this is the Pierce-Clegg project for the coroner to expand their operation so they can gain accreditation, so Dr. Duke Johnson.
Right, as we had discussed before in a meeting that wasn't a business meeting, the same information is being presented in a business meeting that, that in order for us to obtain accreditation, we have to have access to space so that allows for consultation, separate room for consultation with families, et cetera. That's just part of their requirements. And so what we would propose and ask is for the ability and right to, there's a pod right next to us that would be perfect for it, it's currently being used for storage, if we could just knock two doors through that, that wall, both for our current staff to expand that we're using right now so they could all be together, and then also for the room downstairs. And if we can get the authorization to do that, we would also need, it's estimated to cost, you know, less than $10,000 to do it, so we don't have to do that with bid. And so we're just seeking your approval to do that.
Questions?
No questions.
Okay, and then at this point, are we still taking it out of your budget? And when we get to the end, August, September, then we'll make you whole if this causes you to go outside of budget?
Exactly. If we don't need to, to, you know, extend that money or request, then absolutely take it out of our current budget, but just in case we need to, in order to qualify.
Okay.
I move that we approve the Pierce-Clegg project for the coroner.
I would say not to exceed $10,000, second.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion approved, item 19. Dave, can I handle 19 through 26 in one action as long as we state every single lease in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's see, who is here to speak to the consignment, or the consent of assignment of lease? Kim, are you on the line? So I didn't get ahold of anybody to make sure that this was still appropriate after this morning's meeting. Dave, are you?
No, no.
Okay, let's. Right. Hi, who just joined us by phone?
Hi, I'm sorry, this is Kim Stevenson from the airport.
Hi, Kim. Based on this morning's meeting, are these items still desire to go forward?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to handle them.
Nobody told me otherwise.
Okay, well, we'll just handle them then. Go ahead and state your normal case, Kim.
Kim Stevenson at the airport for the record. So Coeur d'Alene Jet Center LLC consolidated its business earlier this year into North Idaho Jet LLC, and therefore, all the leases that were in the name of CDA Jet LLC, they're asking to be assigned to North Idaho Jet LLC. And I don't know how you want to group them, go through them individually?
I think the motion will just state each lease, if that's appropriate for counsel.
And I don't think this really has much to do with what we talked about this morning.
Right.
If there's a sense of any.
Sure.
Questions, motion?
No questions, but I'll make the motion here. I move that we consent to assigning of the lease, and I will list all the different leases to be assigned to North Idaho Jet LLC.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, I apologize for being late.
No, that was not a problem at all. All right, item 27, this is a financial budget request, transfer funds from A budget to B budget for the prosecuting attorney's office, and Prosecutor Mortenson, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record, this is Stanley Mortenson. As the board may know, last year, it was budgeted in my office for witness payments in the Criminal Division for $53,500. As the board may also know, in order to secure convictions in some of the higher-profile cases my office handles, to include child molestation, child abuse, and murder, it involves retaining experts and paying them a lot of money for their review of cases and testimony in court. And I've got some high-profile cases that we have to address between now and October, and before I authorize payment on any of them, I needed to look at the budget, and my office is over budget by about $10,000. When I last ran the numbers.
In this particular line item or overall?
In this line item.
Thank you.
Last I ran the numbers, we were right at budget, but I don't know any better way to say it, I overlooked a $10,000 payment that still needed to go out. I confused it with an earlier payment to the same person, thinking that was the total and it wasn't. So my apologies for that. But basically, I polled my attorneys, and between now and October, we've got some high-profile cases that'll go to hearing and trial, and we're going to spend tens of thousands of dollars on those prosecutions if we're going to prosecute them. And so I'm asking to convert money from the A budget to the B budget using budget savings from salary savings. I'll need, obviously need $10,000 to put us back into the black, but I'm going to need $60,000 to $70,000 in addition to that to prosecute cases between now and October. And so I'm asking for $80,000 from the A budget to the B budget.
Okay, and Brandy?
If the board wants, I can give examples as to how the money's been spent so far, but we have been receiving convictions and grand jury indictments in these cases, so retaining these experts have proved to be very fruitful and beneficial.
I trust your office does not engage.
No nacho machines are being bought.
That's, thank you.
You can, you have $300,000 of contingency in the Justice Fund, that would be the simplest way, and that's what prosecutors have done in the past.
I may, yeah, I may ask to go that way instead. The only thing is, we can approve that today, but the, when we go to approve the contingency, it has to be all three of us.
Oh, Bill's not on the line?
Correct.
Oh, I thought he was on the line.
No. So I think we can, because the money's not been spent yet, and you still have $10,000 room in your budget overall, I think we can say, yes, we want to do that out of contingency, and then when you start spending money, we'll just have to make sure that Bill is in agreement with that.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
So do you want to motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we, this is for contingency fund and not from A to B.
Correct.
Yeah. I move that we approve the request to transfer funds out of the contingency fund, the Justice Center, of up to $80,000 for the prosecuting attorney.
For witness.
For witness cases.
Second.
Just for the record's clear, this is for line item 8251, for witness payments.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I apologize, I know we're short on time. Some of these, we wanted to retain some of these experts last week, but we didn't want to do it for today.
You have approval today.
Okay.
So you can go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's something on the back end that we'll have to readdress later, but you're good to go today.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, we'll call. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion approved. And item 28, board approval request for a temporary part-time employee in the prosecutor's office, and Dorothy, are you handling this?
Yes, Dorothy Cross for the record. We brought this forward at the HR meeting last week, but it was incorrectly titled as an overlap pay, so that is why we're bringing it forward now. Stan has a employee retiring, we would like her to come back on a part-time basis to train.
Okay, and August 1st through September 30th, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, motion?
Nope. I move that we approve the request for a temporary part-time employee in the prosecutor's office from August 1 through September 30.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motions approved, and board approval request, reclassification of BOCC Business Analyst to BOCC Executive Assistant, and again, Dorothy?
Yes, Dorothy Cross for the record again, you've already seen the job description, you helped write it, but this will change the position to a grade seven non-exempt, and so we do need you to approve that, please.
Okay. And then I, when we get into this, if we need to change it to an exempt position, is that, we can work with HR on that?
We would have to do a, an analysis under FLSA, but yes.
Okay. All right, and then I would also ask that we advertise this to a range 11, so to maybe attract somebody with higher experience.
Grade 11?
No, grade seven, up to step 11.
Okay.
Just, and all it is, is putting the range in the job description to maybe attract somebody who, who would have that level of experience.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't know that we're going to get there, but I hope is, so.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the request to reclassify the BOCC Business Analyst position to a BOCC Executive Assistant position to a grade seven non-exempt up to step 11.
Advertising up to seven.
When you advertise.
Yes. Second. I don't know what I'm waiting for.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Item 30, quick claim deed, this is a conveyance of Snowshoe Road right-of-way to Post Falls Highway District and its AIN 300868, and Pat Braden, our civil deputy prosecuting attorney.
Hi, Pat Braden, civil deputy prosecuting attorney for the record. This will be a conveyance of a property that actually was, was taken through the tax deed process in part, in large part because nobody really knew who owned it at the time, and so this will clear up the title to the road. Post Falls Highway District has agreed to accept this. It's basically, it's a strip of land that contains the roadway for Snowshoe Road from Riverview Drive west to a north-south leg of the same road, Snowshoe Road, that is already Post Falls Highway District right-of-way. And so that will ensure that the public and particularly the property owners along Snowshoe Road do have legal access to their parcels. Once the deed is, assuming it's approved today, once that board signs the deed, it'll go to the Highway District first, their acceptance, and once they sign the acceptance, it will be recorded and be Post Falls Highway District right-of-way from that point on.
I'm sure the surrounding neighbors will be thrilled.
Yes.
Questions, motion?
No questions. I move that we approve the conveyance of the quick claim deed for Snowshoe Road right-of-way to Post Falls Highway District, AIN number 300868.
Second. Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 31 has been polled.
Item 31 has been polled. And now item 32, Resolution 2023-40. This is a right-of-way exchange out at Fighting Creek and our solid waste. And hi, Director Phillips, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. So this is an item that I'm bringing back to you because there was some issues with the transaction between Cootney County and the Worley Highway District, so they made or requested change. So the solid waste department is again requesting that the BOCC approve this new resolution number 2023-40 in regard to the Fighting Creek landfill right-of-way exchange with Worley Highway District. If approved, this would reconfigure an existing right-of-way that currently crosses a wetland mitigation area that we constructed. The newly configured right-of-way will avoid the wetland and will be a much better location for Cootney County as well as the Worley Highway District. This right-of-way also includes the exchange of a 3.588 acre triangle, AIN 312328, located off the Sunup Bay Road, which would be deeded from Cootney County Solid Waste to the Worley Highway District. This 3.588 acre piece of property is not anticipated to be useful to the department in the future. So with that, I'm requesting your approval of Resolution 2023-40.
Okay. Questions, motion?
No questions. I move that we approve Resolution 2023-40, the right-of-way exchange at Fighting Creek for the solid waste.
Second. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Now we can head on to our status update pending list and still...
I'm sorry, I did, I apologize.
All right, the facilities expansion, our next meeting is June 26th. Bill is not here to speak to impact fees or the jail pods. And then prosecuting attorney, there's still no update on that from building and grounds. So the only other thing that I would say would be, I know I've heard comments from the public that these meetings seem to be just already approved in advance, and they're not, but the packet of information which is available online gives us enough detail where we don't have questions or we can ask questions ahead of the meeting. So, yes, we go through it pretty quickly because we understand the topics and our department heads have explained them to us, so just want to make that comment. But I will call for public comment now.
Brandy Falcone, for the record, I have a question on item 17, where you approved them to proceed to drawings. What is the funding source for that fee to, I believe it's to Corey Trapp?
I think it'll just have to be fund balance out of our facilities line item.
So the five-year plan money or general fund balance in Fund 11?
General fund balance, but don't we have a line item that says?
Yeah, it's like the, for the, you started at like 600,000, yes, for like mid-year changes. There's 13 million for master plan.
Gotcha.
1.5 million for buildings or jail and buildings and grounds.
Right. So it was the...
And then anything extra for like any mid-year type of stuff comes from that?
The 600,000 line?
600,000 this year is what was in there.
Sure.
Take it from there?
Yeah, it sounds fine.
Okay, and just move it into Tom Reed's maintenance budget, because he does all the maintenance for the sheriff and pay it through there?
That's a great question.
I think it would probably come from his budget.
He has already agreed to cover what Corey Trapp has been doing, so...
Right, so I could just move the fund balance into his budget to pay for this?
Let's start there.
Okay. Thank you.
Jonathan, anybody online? Anybody on the telephone? 2:35 meeting adjourned, thank you.